Check, check. Audio test, one, two, three. Audio testing.
Hi Jim, how are you?
I see, you know my name without even seeing me.
I can see you.
Okay, I can't see you.
Ah, I'll fix that.
Oh, it's alright. The only one I don't see here is Steve.
I am going to mute until you're ready to gavel in because we're hearing some other station over our station.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's you.
Okay, I think we can unmute now. So apparently we're live on YouTube.
Apparently.
And on television as well.
Alright, hello.
Oh, my goodness.
Hello, world. Welcome to this very exciting meeting of the Mount Holly Planning Commission. We're waiting for one more commissioner to arrive. We'll wait a couple minutes.
That's really exciting YouTube then.
Ratings are just gonna go through the roof for this one.
You think?
Jim, you can do a song and dance.
I'm not doing anything.
Nah.
Jim's gonna do it.
No fun in that. I could do a coffin dance maybe.
What is, what can, what can your bird do?
Ooh.
Ah, what would you like him to do?
What kind of bird?
African gray.
Oh!
Oh, cool.
Oh!
That's the coolest bird.
They can do all kinds of things.
Yeah, he's also a picker.
He can, what?
Like banjo picker?
No, he picks his feathers.
Oh.
He, he, um, when they get stressed or anything, they pick.
Yep.
And for whatever reason, he's stressed.
A new one that used to yell at the dog, shit, bad dog!
Yeah, well, this one calls a cat and dog.
We'll give, uh, we'll give Stephen one more minute here.
And he answers the telephone and dials the telephone.
Oh, that's hilarious.
You know, the beeping sound?
Yep.
He'll make the beeping sound, and then I say hello, yeah, yeah, okay, bye.
I love it. Oh, they're telling us not to cuss.
No cussing.
Oh.
There are whatever FCC rules we have to abide by. Alright, I call the meeting to order at 7:05. We have a quorum. Hopefully Stephen will show up.
He's here.
He is?
Yeah.
Oh, I guess I don't show all the people. My apologies, I didn't see you there, Stephen. I don't know what I was waiting for then.
I was running late. I always have a whole issue with the computer.
He just snuck in.
Uh, just to make you aware, if you hadn't seen it already, we're live on YouTube and on TV, and we've been advised to avoid cussing. Uh, are there any changes to the agenda?
Oh.
Um, did you want to do the annual, add the annual report, or was that on the agenda? I don't seem to remember seeing it.
It's on there, 7A.
Okay, sorry.
Yep. Okay, moving right along. Uh, are there any changes or additions to the minutes as distributed?
Need to move approval or just accept them?
Has everyone had a chance to review them?
Yes.
Okay. If there are no changes, uh, I move that we accept the minutes as distributed. Is there a second?
A second.
Yeah.
Okay, the eyes?
Yeah.
Yep.
Right, unanimous. Um, I just want to do a quick report. I don't have a lot of details, but there were, maybe, uh, some other people could fill in if there's any more additional information. The town budget was approved, and we have a couple of items on it that are related to us. Um, we did bring in approximately $600 of subdivision revenue for last year, and they're estimating the same for this year. I think that's reasonable.
Um, well, is the budget approved, or it's just gone approved?
Oh, it's been, you're right, you're right. I should say it's been approved by the select board. It's gone to a vote for the town in the town meeting. Part on the ballot, actually, right? Um, and the budget for the planning commission clerk was, uh, we, we got a few more hours this year from last year. Last year, we didn't have the clerk for half the year, so that's good. Um, let's see, there's also something, maybe I wanted to ask Jim about this.
Alright.
There's a planning commission expense. Do you know what that had been used for in the past?
Planning commission expense, that might have been when we printed the report.
Okay.
When they were discussing the budget, they also were talking that it might have been postage and additional printing costs. Uh, they also did mention that it was part of the, uh, sending of the report at the time. So, like, any ancillary costs that we would have to incur directly.
Okay.
You know, copying and stuff like that wouldn't be included because that's buried in, you know, the, uh, town expenses.
Okay.
Yeah, but we had, uh, we had some, uh, the town plan, when we printed that, we had an expense.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, when you start printing stuff, it goes pretty quick.
Yeah, it was, what, fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars, something like that.
Yep, and that's about it for us. Did anyone else have any other comments about the budget?
Uh, there was also an additional line for the administrative officer.
There is?
Yes, I believe they put in a thousand dollars. In addition to, I believe, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was three thousand for the, uh, planning commission clerk.
Right, yep.
If I remember correctly.
That's right.
A thousand dollars for the administrative officer. So in essence, uh, in the budget, there's a total of about four grand available if, uh, she, Renee, I don't want to talk to you in the third person, sorry. Uh, if, uh, you know, she needs those kind of hours.
Right, yeah, so hopefully, I, I mean, as, as you all remember, we had advised that the, the majority of the administrative officer funding come from the fees, but that didn't go through. So that's why they had to put in the thousand dollars for the administrative officer. Hopefully, in the future, my view, and I will view in the past of the planning commission, at least a couple of months ago, was that the people doing the development would bear the costs rather than the taxpayers, but, uh, that's something to take up next year. Alright, any further comments about the budget? Okay, we'll move right along then. To the clerk's report, speaking of Renee, she has a couple of updates for us.
One update.
One update, enough.
Just that I mailed the Timko decision letter to Robin Timko and a copy to Kevin Thompson.
Great. So that's nice, we could call that one done.
Now, did Jim Fram get one of those? Seeing as he was the, uh, person getting the piece of land.
And I believe he was the one that paid the fees, if I was, I was.
Actually, Jim did write the check. Timko didn't.
Well, he wasn't a party in the subdivision hearing, so we didn't send him one.
Well, Jim Fram is the one that received the piece of land.
Right, I understand. So to answer your question, no.
I, I guess we could just send a regular, you know, letter, unless somebody has his email, and then you can email it to him.
No, it's pretty much the same address. Only with his name on it.
Okay, well, we sent one to that address.
Yeah, but the way I heard the story, I'm not too sure Timko's gonna tell them.
I, you know, I get it that there's a whole lot of drama here, we just are not in the middle of it.
You don't need to be.
Yep, we, we did what we were supposed to do. If he was a party to the subdivision, he would have been in the hearing minutes. He was not. So, we sent it to the people that were there. Okay. Thank you for the report, Renee. Um, we got a really quick month here for correspondence, so that'll be, that'll be nice. No subdivision proposals as of today. No building construction registrations, which is not terribly surprising considering the weather. Uh, no wastewater permits, and no emails. So, there we go. Correspondence, check. Alright, we'll move right along to 6A. Review, this is unfinished business from last month. We, uh, began, uh, well, we mentioned the, uh, subdivision guide, so-called, on the webpage has been updated. I updated it. And hopefully by now, you've all had a chance to take a look. Should be straight, pretty straightforward. And, uh, this is opportunity for any discussion or discussion of.
I read it.
Yeah, I think you, uh, when I asked about it, you said that the only update was a link to the uh, fee schedule, I believe, or did I misinterpret you?
That was the, the, the most significant change. There were some details like, I mean, I don't remember them all off the top of my head, like, um, getting the fee upfront in the suit, and I discussed that we would like to get PDFs of the Platts to make our work easier. Um, when possible, so that kind of thing has been added. I did, um, I think I addressed most of the things you sent in email. You asked for, uh, links at the bottom of the page for all the documents. I did, I added that since you may have reviewed it. Um, I also put a link to the, um, the select board's fee schedule on our main page. So, I think that was most of your comments in email.
Mm-hmm, alright, thank you. I, I, to be honest, I didn't go back and look. I apologize for that.
Do we need a motion to accept, or are we all set?
I don't think so. It's a webpage, they just, you know, these are going to be updated as we go. I just want everybody to be involved when they, if they want to be.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, probably what I will do next with that, I'll probably just print out the webpage and give Sue a copy in case anyone comes in and wants a hard copy uh, instructions, you know, it's not the official website, so I don't think we can necessarily rely on people going there. Uh, I'll just give Sue a copy in case, you know, that's helpful. Okay. I think that's it for unfinished business. Uh, moving on to new business. Um, we have an opportunity, in fact, I recently learned about this a little later than the deadline, but they have been gracious, the auditors have been gracious enough to extend the deadline until tomorrow morning, very early, um, to to send in a, an annual report for the planning commission. And, um, I got a couple copies of the previous years. And I made my best shot at summarizing what happened this year. Quite a few things happened. Tried to keep it brief while still covering everything. Did everyone have a chance to see it?
Good.
Okay, everyone did?
Yes, I, uh, I sent you a PDF with my comments.
Okay. Um, one change I did make to my copy is I corrected a statement I made. I said we hadn't had a clerk for a few years. I think that's incorrect. I think Carrie Doherty was our clerk at the beginning of 2019. Jim, does that sound right?
Uh, it sounds about right.
Okay, so it hasn't been few years. It's been o- over a year. So I changed it to say the commission has been without a clerk for over a year. Even though it may be two. I don't know exactly. I didn't go and look at when she left.
Yeah, it was either the end of eighteen or the first of nineteen.
I did, I did see, um, some, um, one copy of the minutes from early nineteen that had her name on it. So I just made the assumption she was.
You want to give me a minute? I can go look for the schedule that David sent us. Uh, when people were being paid and that would probably indicate what year.
Yeah, I think we're, I think as long as everybody else is cool, that I think over a year is just fine.
I think we've got it covered.
Yeah, um, okay, so let's see, there's, you sent some stuff then, I guess. Let me see here. I read it, but I don't, I didn't print it.
So the first change that Stephen suggested is in the third paragraph. Where he suggested the select board asked the commission to revise or amend the town plan. He said revise the town plan and revise or amend as appropriate, review the town plan and revise or amend as appropriate.
Fine. I mean, I, that, that sounds fine. If he's at the light, Stephen, did you get that language from their minutes or something? I mean, that, that's fine.
That's what I seem to remember from the minutes.
Yeah, I mean.
At the time.
Just trying to, you know, just trying to cut down on the words, but that, that's fine if you want to make that change. I'll, I'll put that in. The next change, I think, was adding administrative officer, right?
Um, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba. No, B was right above it, uh, in that same paragraph where you had the web link, the website. Drafts are, will be available in the town office. And I said the current town plan adopted in twenty eighteen and the previous town plan are also available at the same location.
Given that we only have a page, I'm going to suggest we not add that one. No, um, uh, it's, it's valid, but if people go to that website, they can find it, I think.
All right, yeah, I, I mean, I was just trying to be.
I had a, a thing get thrown back because it was more than a page. They will only give us a page.
I, I was told that they wanted it half a page, but, but we had so much go on this year, I couldn't really do it.
Yeah, I know. You, you did a real nice job, I'll tell you.
Oh, well, thank you. In the past years, they tried to put pictures in half a page for us, so. Yeah, there were a lot happening. I think it's important that people get a chance to, to hear it, so, um, I'll, I'll take a look. I don't think B is really adding a whole lot, but if I can add something in a couple of words, I'll try to do that.
Yeah, it was just, I was just trying to, you know, tell people, hey, there's more information there.
Okay, um, administrative officer, I'm not going to put that in there. Um, because I'd have to go and explain how that's different from a clerk and it's not, the administrative officer technically doesn't work for us. So I'm going to leave that one off. Um, and, and also the administrative officer, you know, it's like, wasn't hired, was appointed by the select board and I think that's going to add a lot of words. So the next paragraph you suggested. So.
Jim.
I, I think the confusion there is, um, the terms that I was referring to. I don't know, maybe I should bring this up.
I could probably.
Share this. I don't know.
Well, basically, I was just saying.
I don't know if it's talking about a document they can't see or not, but anyway, let's just get through this quickly. So the, the terms that I was referring to are the planning commission terms for our, our, the commissioner. And the three-year terms. And so what I was trying to say there is, um, I was appointed uh, by the select board to complete Peter's term. And I think the confusion you had, and this may be.
Okay.
No, is you were, you were associating that term with the chairmanship.
Right.
In the, that's, that's not, I just happened to say, he, he just happened to serve as chair. And then Jim, of course, uh, um, was elected chair in, in his absence after.
Okay, then I had that, I just was going to say this, you know, then there should have been, I guess, you know.
Yeah, no, I did say, what, I, I, I'll take the point there. Let, let me try to rephrase what you're saying. And I'll add something there and then Jim, uh, Jim was elected chair to replace.
Well, to complete Peter's term and then you were elected in, and I had to correct that to November, not September.
Well, I, I'll try to rework, I'm not going to be able to do that on the fly here, but I'll, I'll take the point.
Chair is a, uh, one-year term.
Right, right. I think there's just the two terms that got confused there.
Well, we can just say you were appointed to complete his term and in November were elected uh, chair for the, what is it?
Well, but we want to put Jim in there as having been.
Yeah, I want to put Jim in there somewhere too, so let me rework, let me rework it in, in a way that, that does both those things. I'll, I'll just try to do that after the meeting.
Right.
Next one was minor. It's just, I didn't think he retired. I thought he resigned.
I use that word because that's what he says to people, but.
Okay, um.
I don't know.
Leave it that way, retired.
Yeah, when I heard him talk about it, I mean, I think he, I, I tried to figure out, I took a couple of hours and tried to figure out how many years he was on the commission, but I, I think it was close to eleven. Is that right, Jim? Do you think? I'm sorry, Clinton.
Oh, Clinton?
Yeah.
No. Oh, he was on about the same number of years I was at that time.
How much is that?
Four, four, five.
Okay.
I, I'm making an assumption here, but didn't he come on when the previous, uh, head of the highway department, uh, retired?
No, not necessarily.
No, okay, I'm wrong then. All right.
Okay, well, anyway, I, um, I, I, I am sort of ambivalent of whether he is retired or resigned. I think honoring his service, retiring sounds better, but.
All right, then stay, if that's what he's saying, stay with it.
I, I'm, I'm open to suggestion from the rest of you.
Uh, uh, retirement sounds better.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then moving down to.
Number C, I think, or letter C, return to the meeting at the town office as soon as the governor permits. I think that goes without saying for all meetings.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna play that one by ear. I don't want to pin us into a corner here.
Right, well, the, the problem is, and this is where the select board ran into it, where all public meetings ha- even if you're remote, you have to have a physical. You know, according to the statutes, so.
A what?
It, according to the sta-, uh, the Vermont statute, that even if you're doing remote meetings, you have to have one of the members of the commission or the select board, whatever, has to be at a physical location so that people can be there. Now, we're conveniently forgetting that because, you know, uh, no one's going to show up for our physical meetings.
Know if that's true.
Uh, yeah, I'd have to look.
I don't really want to go into that right now.
Yeah, I know, I, that's why I said I was using the governor as the excuse and say we would go back.
I'm gonna just cut it short here and let's, I'm not going to put anything about that because w- we're going to do what we think is best for the community and we all want it, we all want to be back in a room together as soon as we can. So I think that.
Also, this is the twenty twenty report.
Yeah, this, I'm not, this is not a projection for next year. Um, and then the last ones were, I think.
Changing R to the town website.
Yeah, I'm not going to say that because I'm, I don't want to step into this official website, um, debate. It's our website. We use it. It may or may not be the town's website.
Now you.
Follow my logic. It is not.
You lost me completely.
It is not the official town website and I don't want to get involved in that debate at all. And, uh, it's our website. We use it for, it's the only website we have. So I'm going to put our website instead of the town website. That was a very deliberate choice. Is that clear?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, you know, if, if anyone wants to have a debate about whether there should be a town website, by all means, it's not going to include me.
No, it's, um, you know, I disagree, but it's not worth a debate and it's not worth taking up the time.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get through this tonight, so.
And I don't know.
Those are, those are good suggestions and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna work on those after the meeting.
Did anybody else have other suggestions? I mean, I, I just gave you my thoughts and obviously I could have missed.
I was not going to ask that.
Oh, sorry. Didn't mean to step on it.
It's all right. Anybody else? Lisa, Bridget, Jim?
Oh, I'm set.
Lisa, you got anything for me? No, okay.
Renee, you want to throw?
Work for you, Jim?
Oh, far anyway.
All right. Cool, and again, very nice that the auditors extended that deadline to us and it's, uh, I think it'll be good to get it in. I don't think there's anything else that needs to be added and it's just right at a page, so I think we're in good shape. Um, okay, so, let's see, what else do we have? All right, we got, uh, Stephen, Mr. Michelle is on the agenda to discuss his um, thoughts on the administrative officer job description. And we're going to try to keep this time limited as well, Stephen, so.
All right, well, everybody got it about a month ago, so I'm hoping everybody took a look at it. Um, I mean, basically, having spoken to John, uh, what we're looking at was, I'm going to call it the, what was posted as a job. Uh, looking for somebody to take the job, let's put it that way. Uh, but it can't be really what the present administrative officer can do. Um, because there are a number of functions in there that are, um, not practical for them to do, either from a logistics standpoint or from a time constraint. Uh, additionally, if you look at the job description, I believe, John, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I, that basically this was a copy of what was earlier done a number of years ago. And really, the first fifteen items are nothing more than a straight dump from the, um, subdivision, uh, descriptions. Um, and then the rest are either pieces pulled out from the, uh, construction and the functions of the planning, uh, commit, the planning commission clerk. Um, I mean, we can go through the specific items if you want, or does anybody have specific comments they want to go over because I sent everything out?
Yeah, I'll just start with, um, two things and I'll then open up to the others. The first is that we developed this job description, you're right, based on the version that was used to hire the administrative officer in the past. And that was so, many years ago. Uh, we did update it to be more relevant to, uh, twenty twenty, including the digital and virtual meeting requirements. Um, that said, our input into it was limited to that, um, updating. This, and we did that sort of at the request of the select board. They allowed us to do that because we know more about the position than they do. At that point, they took over. They're the ones who appointed the officer. The administrative officer doesn't work for the planning commission. It is slightly confusing. No, it's a very clear issue. There's no ambiguity there. The administrative officer does not work for the planning commission. You could shake your head. It's just not.
Well, I'm not trying to interrupt you. I'm just.
Um, they hire, they, they appointed the officer and, um, if they want to revisit the job description, ultimately, that's their decision. Um, certainly, if we were to rehire, if, for whatever reason, we needed to rehire, revisiting the job description would be something that's, um, a good idea. Without that, I think it's a slightly academic exercise that might be largely a waste of time.
All right, well, then just my major points are that what's in there are functions that, uh, and again, I apologize, I'm not trying to attack Renee or anything. Um, but that Renee is not trained to do, or we don't have the ti- or, or doesn't have the time. Um, or doesn't have the computer capable of doing like the GIS stuff. Um, if you look at, I disagree with the, where you say, um, she, the, at the administrative officer, uh, works for the select board. They appointed her, correct. But if you look at the job functions, the subdivision functions, the construction functions, the hazard, um, the flood zone functions and the last uh, seven functions, sixteen through twenty-three are all functions that are done by uh, by or for the, uh, planning commission. So, you know, um, as a, you know, I'm just trying to look at this as trying to give the administrative officer a job description of what, so that that person can succeed and not give that person, I hate talking about Renee in a third person, but it's, I don't want to pick on her. Um, not giving her jobs that she can't succeed at. I mean, the best example I can think of is maintaining the CIS, uh, maps. And you yourself, John, said that the computer we have in the planning commission office can't handle that program.
It can now.
So how can we ask her, I mean, to do something that we don't give her the equipment to do?
Yeah, we have, we now have the equipment to do it. We have a GIS program in the planning commission office as we speak. The requirement is that someone that we hire for this position, um, would ultimately become familiar with it. That is a goal, uh, that is, in, you know, in order that, um, someone we're hiring has a, has a gist of what things might be asked. This is not, I mean, I, you know, I know we have had this discussion many times now. A job description in my
What?
Long career is, has never been used as a review tool. And, um, a job description is used for hiring or acquiring new personnel. You don't always use it to, to, uh, judge the performance of an employee. And that said, the perform, the performance of this particular town employee will be judged by the select board.
All right.
Bridget, you had a comment? Yeah.
I'll keep quiet. Somebody else can talk. Go ahead. Sorry.
This was just adopted in September. I'm not really sure why we're revisiting it. Is it, I mean, we're not posting for a new job yet, right?
No, 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 I was not, I was not looking at it as a job posting document. I was looking at it as a job description that could be given to the administrative officer that says this is what we really expect to do, rather than a hiring aspiration.
Well, I mean, it was just adopted in September. I don't think it's up to us to revisit it yet. That's my two cents.
All right. Anybody, I mean, I sent to everybody. Any other comments from anybody else then? Yay, nay, or tell me to shut up?
Jim, where are you at?
He's on mute. There we go.
Pardon?
I was curious where you're, where, where you're landing on this issue.
Well, as Bridget says, it's not something that's, needs to be in this issue of the, um, town report. Town report. Seen as a town reporters for last year.
No, 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 this is, we're just talking about the job description.
But as far as a job description goes. It's. Any, any jobs I did. When I had a job description, if I couldn't do it, then I wasn't qualified for the job. And didn't get it. So. You know.
Yeah, I, I think if you, when we're in the, you know, if the opportunity arises. For us to look for a new candidate. Then if we think the job description is too detailed. Or too difficult. I'm, I'm certainly going to be the first person to suggest we revise it. We're not in that position to recommend that the select board appoint a new administrative officer. We're not looking for a new clerk. Thankfully.
No, that's not.
We're very happy that.
No, 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 that's not what I was suggesting. What I was, my changes were to drop things. That we wouldn't want to evaluate Renee, I'm, I'm sorry. We wouldn't want to evaluate the administrative officer on because we don't expect the administrative officer to perform those functions. That's the only reason I was looking at.
In ten seconds, what are they?
Well.
What are those things that you don't want to?
The first, I, I marked them up on the marked up copy. I can bring it up, but it's the, a number of the functions that are done by. The town clerk. Such as handing out the documents, you know, when the first two or three items.
Yeah.
Under the subdivision thing, the, at the time when we talked about a month ago. Doing the CIS.
GIS.
Our G, GIS, sorry. And a few other things, you know, just not. Basically, I was trying to delete things that I didn't think. We would want to expect. The administrative officer to do and should not evaluate that person on.
Okay. Anybody else? Final comments on this issue? Are there any members of the public present? I don't think so.
I don't see any.
You know, it'd be nice if eventually we can get some public people here, folks of the members of the public.
Won't see you on here.
Alright, so we need to decide our next meeting for the, we probably should take another look at what we're doing for the town plan. It's been a little while. So let's see what our schedules look like and let's see what Okimo can help us accommodate. We had been doing, I think it kind of worked out pretty well, the, was the first Wednesday of the month. Was that working for all of you? That will be the third of February.
Yeah, let me get my.
And I know we had started those early and I think that was partly for. Maybe it was for Gabrielle or Nicole. I don't know if I want to start those at six like we were.
Sure ain't for me.
Yeah. We're starting to get into your season, Jim. Right, not quite.
Yeah. And when you get into my season, the later the better. Midnight would work good.
Yeah, that's, we're gonna have to make a compromise, I think. How about seven on the third? Does that work for everyone?
I don't have a calendar, but I assume.
Wednesday, the third of February at seven PM. And Eric, is, is that still open for us, Eric? Are you still there?
That works.
Great, alright.
That works.
And fill that in.
Bless you.
Alright, well, I wish we had some more exciting things to do for the live audience tonight, but I think that draws. Draws our meeting to a close. Does anybody have any final thoughts?
You want, you don't want me to do a song and dance?
Oh, I think we can.
A move that we adjourned.
Alright, second.
Like I once said, these meetings don't have to be very long.
No, we, we tried to keep it, I tried to keep it to a half an hour. That was the goal. Went a little over. Okay. Meeting is now adjourned at seven forty-one.
February three, Wednesday at seven.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Okay, I'm stopping the recording.
Sorry about, who, who swore, Eric?
I'm ending the meeting.
Is it, you ended it already? Oh no, we're, so we're going to be live right till the end.
Yeah.
John?
Alright, bye, bye, everybody.
In, in your, wait a second, you said February third? Is that going to be like the special meeting and not the regular meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Good night, be safe.